Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, regular town council meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Here.
Present.
Present.
President.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Joe Wizwati.
President.
David Westlin.
President.
And Beth Berninas, President.
All right, item three, public comment. First on the list is Nick Lubers, 13207 109th Avenue.
He was here earlier.
Okay.
For sanitary.
Moving along, Michael Bovat, 9291 West 103rd Place.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael Bovat, 9291 West 103rd Place, St. John. Regards to Earl Drive, Mr. President, other council members. You've been provided the development agreement, the grant of easement, and a legal opinion as related to Earl Drive. The two agreements provide the town the right to use the road and obligate the owner to maintain the road. You have to read these two agreements together to understand how they are related and to understand it does, in fact, relate to the town. It's not just an agreement between two business owners. This portion of road is platted in the exact same manner as all other portions of road, located in this same area. The only difference is, all the other owners are maintaining their sections of road except in this instance. As elected officials, we should be concerned and have regard for being good stewards of public money, and we ask that you do not make this purchase. After tonight, you'll only have 23, possibly 24 days left in office. We, the incoming elected council, ask that you grant us the opportunity to resolve this issue. It is not necessary to purchase this road for $280,000 to have it repaired. It is not. Respectfully yours, the incoming elected town council members. And in part of the legal opinion, I'd just like to read this also to get it on record. In the purchase of this section of Earl Drive proper, this is more of a philosophical analysis if the town council current actions and the potential acquisition of this section of Earl Drive are necessary and proper. We know that the current town council assumed control of the town on January 1st, 2019. However, it was not reelected to an additional term. While only recently undertaking this project endeavor one month ago, so in essence, this current town council has waited over 46 months to take any type of action concerning this proposed acquisition. Hence, the current town council should not take any further action to purchase this section of Earl Drive for approximately $280,000. But further consideration and analysis should be undertaken by the incoming newly-elected town council, and that's a legal opinion. I'd like to thank you all for your consideration on this issue, and I would also like to add that I think it would be in good taste if this council, maybe even you, Mr. President, if you could give Mr. Wayne Pondinas an apology, as he was really right in regards to Earl Drive. And I thank you.
I want to thank you, Mike, and everybody up here has a right to their opinion. And my opinion was, you don't have to fix the, you can fix the road, you don't have to purchase it. And to spend all that kind of money and to tell everybody you're good stewards of money, that's not a good way to act. It's not right.
I didn't know this is a speech hour, but since it is...
Well, it can be a speech hour. You have your right. Go ahead.
To say a few things. I've never seen any evidence of any agreement that compels a private owner in this country to have public access, that he must maintain it. That's baloney. So, and there's not an agreement...
We have, when they signed it.
Excuse me, there's not an agreement, there does not exist an agreement between the private owners and the town to have them maintain it to a road standard. That is not true. And the information that Wayne Pondinas handed out at the last study session meeting had nothing to do with the town whatsoever, except that the properties within the town. It was between two private owners. It had nothing to do with the town, no agreement between the town...
It's an easement agreement.
And so what you said about it was incorrect. You deserve no apology. You should apologize to us.
Why should I apologize to you?
Representing false information.
No, it's not false information. Joe Wizwati said, "Give me the information," in an email, and I gave it to him.
Right. It has nothing to do with the town.
That's your opinion.
Well, it's just a statement of fact.
It's an easement. That's an easement for us to go on that property. We can fix it for $25,000, and we'd be done with it.
All right, well, Dave, have you had a chance to look at that agreement?
I drafted the agreement.
I don't think it covers the whole property behind McDonald's.
That's why Mr. Decker is representing the town in this regard, is because back in 2011 or 2012, I was representing the landowners with regard to that situation. So I have a conflict, and why I've stayed completely out of this discussion.
Well, you're...
That's why he can't comment.
Okay, well, he can't comment on it, but it doesn't cover the entire property back there, Wayne. I looked at the agreement. I read it.
We don't have to buy all that property. We can fix the road and be done with it, and it costs us maybe $25,000 with no engineering fees.
All right. Vanessa Kootson, 11745 West 105th, either place or avenue. Avenue? It's not on there, and she knows there's two of them.
Mike Schilling, council members. I'm Vanessa Knutson, 11745 West 105th Avenue. I didn't know Mike Bovat was going to speak, but I'm talking about the same subject, just as a private citizen. I'm concerned about the huge $250,000 plus whatever thousands in engineering and whatever repair cost as the proposed purchase price of a tiny beat-up segment of Earl Drive mentioned in last week's study session. This proposed large purchase price, $250,000 plus repair, is for the tiny segment of rundown road, if people aren't familiar, with potholes located between McDonald's and the former Cracked Bat slash warehouse business. It's in the middle of the Earl Drive frontage road that goes from 96th to Alse Store. This tiny road segment is probably the size of some of our driveways. It might hold three to four cars. While the Earl Drive frontage road is a great idea, connecting several businesses and bypassing the very busy US 41, it seems St. John is being held hostage. How else can we account for such a huge price? When the meeting video appeared on my phone about 4:15 PM yesterday, I watched it. I also heard the after-meeting comments inadvertently caught on mic. Some members were discussing, as far as I could tell, and seeming to dismiss the claims Councilman Wayne Pondinas brought forth, and this is my understanding, that there might be a signed agreement holding property owners along Earl Drive responsible for upkeep repair, et cetera. There could possibly also be another law, another town is used in a similar situation. Logically, we should investigate these possibilities before a vote. Thus, I hope this road purchase vote is postponed until January 2024. Seems wise that more research could be done, so let the new council sort it out. We set a bad financial precedent by overpaying. Future businesses along future frontage roads might similarly demand too much money. But certainly, if it is clearly established the town must purchase this tiny segment, let's cut a much better deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, move along to approval of the minutes. You should have them in front of you there for the town council regular meeting, October 25th, 2023, the town council special meeting, November 8th, 2023, and the town council special study session, November 16th, 2023. Anybody have any changes or corrections?
Yeah, on the November 16th, when we had our study session, I made comments about Earl Drive. They're not on here. I asked questions about the Stryker ambulance cots, just where the old ones were going. That's not on here. The inner local agreement, I made some comments about that. They're not on here. It's just, you know, why have somebody record minutes if they don't put people's comments on there?
All right.
And since I asked a question about the Stryker cots, I think they got a $5,000 credit on their bill, according to what I read, so that's a good thing.
Since there's an issue with one of the minutes, we'll go through them separately. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, October 25th, 2023. So moved.
Support.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the November 8th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. So moved.
Support.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero on the November 16th, 2023. What's your guys' pleasure here? Do you want to defer it, or so you can redo it?
Are we fine with that?
I would suggest that. I'll make a motion to defer this. Jerry, you got a better idea?
I'll second.
I have a motion to defer. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four to one.
We don't do verbatim minutes. We don't put everybody's comments in here. It's not the way we take minutes. It's not the way minutes are presented, so I don't think it needs to be modified. That's just my vote.
All right, Jerry. All right, item five, presentation. Chief Stephen Flores.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to, giving us some time for your, on your agenda tonight. We have a couple of presentations that we'd like to bring before you. The first one tonight that we'd like to bring in front of everybody and recognize some individuals that are standing here to my right and left, is in regards to a life-saving measures that they did over the summer. This is something that's been in the works the last couple of months, that we wanted to do this, but with some scheduling conflicts, so we're here finally tonight to be able to do it. So I'll just go over the incident real quick, and then we'll present the awards to the individuals. So we have Officer Neil Olson and Sergeant Luke Lukasik, and then we have father and son here, Elias Orduno and his son, okay, and he's junior. So, July 11th, 2023, at approximately 3 PM, Officer Olson and Sergeant Lukasik were approached by a vehicle with three occupants honking the horn and waving for attention. The driver of their vehicle, Elias Orduno, advised officers that the person in the passenger seat, Gabino, which was his brother, was having a medical emergency. Gabino was suffering from a severe arm injury due to a work at nearby construction site, so he had cut his arm pretty severely. Blood had been spurting from Gabino's arm, and it was later determined that he was suffering from a life-saving or life-threatening arterial bleeding. Elias Orduno and Elias Orduno Jr. were on their way to the hospital so Gabino could receive emergency treatment. Officers noted that Gabino had two makeshift cloth tourniquets on the upper part of his right arm, which they applied. It was also observed that his forearm was wrapped in a cloth and blood was soaking through it. Elias Orduno Jr. was in the backseat, reaching to the passenger front seat so he could apply pressure to the arm, and then the two officers also applied their tourniquets that they carry on them as well. So the St. John Fire Department arrived and advised that Gabino had, if he could have expired if it were not for the efforts of Elias and Elias Jr. and the officers who attended to Orduno's incident. We believe that their quick thinking, calm demeanor, decisive actions not only sustained Gabino's life, but likely saved it. And talking to the paramedics, basically, if they didn't do what they did, there's a good chance he would have passed away. So we want to recognize them and thank them for a job well done.
Thank you again very much.
No? Sure.
We're going to take a real quick picture real fast, if you don't mind. Thank you. Okay, next we have the Logan's Love Foundation. We have some representatives from that foundation here that would like to come to speak.
Hi, everybody. My name is Elaine Reyna, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Logan's Love. We're here tonight to thank the St. John first responders, police officers, firefighters for their support of our new nonprofit organization. All of the St. John first responders were very supportive of the first autism walk that we hosted in northwest Indiana, and it was a great success. Our goal from the walk was to raise enough money to provide the tri-town area first responders with Ben's Blue Bags. These bags were developed by an autism dad, Matt Koticek, also a firefighter, and they contain various sensory and communication items that can really help in traumatic and emergency situations, and they were developed for kids on the autism spectrum, but it's really a universal design, and it's going to be a tool bag that's going to be really useful in a lot of different situations with a lot of different people. Yep. Nicole is Logan's mom. She's going to show you a couple of the items that are available in the bag, and we're here today. Logan's brothers are here as well, and we're here today to present two of the bags to the fire department and 21 bags to the St. John Police Department, and thank you all so much for your support.
So once they contacted me, Matt Koticek was a part-time firefighter here at St. John. I don't know if he still is or not, but I've known him a long time, and when he's put these bags together, we got a couple of them that we use for our patrol officers that they check out. And then when they first started, we were the only, the second agency in Lake County to have them. It was Crown Point first, and then us. So once we got these bags, within the next, it was like a day or two after that, we had a call at Clark Middle School where autistic student ran from the building. We ended up catching them, and obviously, when we got there, we use these bags, and it helped us out tremendously. So there's enough of them to have, every officer in the patrol will have one now in their squad car, so they don't have to check them in and out. So it's going to help tremendously. Like I said, I was there at the walk. It was a great event, a lot of people, the weather was perfect, so we can't thank them enough for doing this for us and providing these bags for the tri-town area. And it's my understanding they're going to keep going, right, and try to get all of Lake County? So it's, yeah, it's a great organization. If you ever see anything or would like to donate, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. So thank you.
They want a couple of pictures with police and fire, if you guys can come up.
And I just want to mention our next event is a sensory-sanit event on December 16th.
Thank you.
Kind of like in grade school.
Who are you calling short?
Me too.
They got them all, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
They got them all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, it is weird.
That's it, thank you. Appreciate it.
Stephen Flores.
You're welcome, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, give it to Town Manager, that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll put it out. Absolutely. Thank you, and best of luck to you guys.
Yes.
All right.
Hey, Randy. All right, moving along, we have a public hearing. Resolution number 2023-11-21E, a resolution authorizing the additional appropriations for various funds. Dave?
I've reviewed the proofs of publication and they're compliant with Indiana law.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following funds require additional appropriations by the town council. General Fund, $112,637. MVH Restricted, $76,000. Riverboat, $53,539. Solid Waste, $25,000. Local Road and Bridge, $190,138. And the Metropolitan Police Pension of $2,000.
Okay, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody who wants to speak about the additional appropriations, please come forward. Anybody from the public? Going once? Going twice? Three times? Nobody? Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2023-11-21E.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, financial matters of the corporation. Item one, request to purchase. There is a total of 10 requests to purchases in the combined total of $209,418.42. Beth, would you like to go over the 10 requests to purchases?
Sure. The amount will actually be $204,418.42 due to that $5,000 credit for the cots, so it's reduced by $5,000. So just when you make your motion, you know, it's 204,418.42. There are 10 requests to purchase. The first is from Lubaca Studios for $7,500. This is for five porta potty paintings on the fences. You have Dell for $45,846.82. This is for the annual Microsoft license agreement. You have EJ USA for $7,598.88. This is for water hydrants for stock. You have an RTP to Ferguson Water Works in the amount of $4,113. This is for a four-inch water main replacement at Lake Central High School. And another RTP to Ferguson Water Works in the amount of $4,113. For another four-inch water meter replacement at Lake Central High School, this one's for their second meter. Fire service in the amount of $4,013.97. This is an emergency repair to truck or vehicle 3022 for coolant leak. Core and main for $68,800, and this is for check valves and couplings for water meters. You have mechanical concepts in the amount of $6,052. This is for some pump replacements at Public Safety Building. There are two some pump replacements included there. You have Leos in the amount of $6,075. This is for the Christmas tree delivery and installation of the Christmas trees. And then Stryker for $50,305.75. This is for two Power Pro cots. This amount includes the trade-in value of $5,000.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, on the parks one from Michael O'Shea, you got Herring Lake, Hartland Park, and the gates, the murals, they're already done. Why is, why is we getting a request to purchase now when it's already done? And it's probably been done for a couple of months.
Is it something that had to be approved at the park board?
I would think that before your work is done, you'd have to get a request to purchase, not backwards.
Did you ask Mike?
No, I just got this today, so...
Any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the request to purchases in the amount of $204,418.42.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose the one for the Park District. I'm okay with everything else.
All right, motion carries four to one. Accounts payable voucher dated November 21st, 2023, representing payment and payroll purchases, supplies, equipment, services rendered to the town of St. John in the combined total of $2,276,134.05. services rendered to the Town of St. John in the combined total of two million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and five cents. Any questions over the docket? I'll entertain a motion to approve the docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Um, four ayes, one abstain. Motion carries four to, uh, four, um...
And one abstention.
Four with one abstention. Next, consider motion to approve progress payment to FH Passion for the Ninety-third Avenue Project in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, and authorize the town, um, the clerk treasurer to issue payment from 2020 geobond.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider motion to approve progress payment to First Group for Construction Engineering for Ninety-third Avenue Project in the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, and authorize the clerk treasurer to issue payment from 2020 geobond.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, uh, ordinance number eighteen oh nine, an ordinance establishing the 2024 Compensation Plan for the Town of St. John, Indiana. Uh, this is the 2024 Salary Ordinance. Um, this comes to us on second reading. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen oh nine on second reading.
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Uh, next, resolution number 2023-11-21. Resolution transferring monies from the General Fund, eleven oh one, and Park Operating Fund, twenty-two oh four, to the Community Events Fund, twenty-five oh one, and all matters related thereto. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Uh, next, uh, resolution number 2023-11-21A. Resolution transferring monies within the 2023 budget from ARPA Capital to fire equipment. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2023-11-21A.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Um, resolution number 2023-11-21B. Civil Resolution Providing for the Transfer of Appropriations From Various Funds of the Town of St. John. Entertain a motion to approve resolution 2023-11-21B.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, five zero. Resolution number 2023-11-21C. Water District Resolution Providing for the Transfer Appropriations For the Various Funds of the Town of St. John. Uh, entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2023-11-21C.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Resolution number 2023-11-21D. Uh, Sewer District Resolution Providing for the, uh, Transfer of Appropriations For Various Funds of the Town of St. John. Uh, entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2023-11-21D.
I'll make that motion for the sanitary district.
I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Uh, resolution number twenty, twenty-three-11-21F. Uh, Resolution Transferring Monies Within the 2023 Budget. ARPA Capital to the Lake County Bridge, uh, number two sixty-eight. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Uh, next, uh, Consider Motion to Approve Task Order Number Twenty-three-Oh-Six and Authorize the Town Manager to Sign for a Lake Hills Dam Inspection as Required by the IDNR for a Total Amount Not to Exceed Eight Thousand, Five Hundred Twenty-Five Dollars. No Sense With Any Items Not Listed to Be Billed at Current Per-Diam Rate Plus Expense With Invoices To Be Submitted Monthly On a Percentage of Compensation Basis.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, Consider Motion to Approve Purchase with Stryker. A Source Well Approved Vendor Number Zero Four One Eight Two Three Dash STY For Two Sixty-Five Oh Seven Power Pro. Two Ambulance Cots And To Authorize The Trade Of Two Existing Twelve-Year-Old Ambulance Cots In For Consideration Of Five Thousand Dollar Credit And Authorize The Clerk Treasurer To Remit Payment To Vendor In The Amount Of Fifty Thousand, Three Oh Five Seventy-Five. Wasn't this in the request to purchases, Joe?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we need to do this a second time? Replace it on the agenda.
Yeah, um...
You've already approved it.
Yeah, the RTP was already approved, so.
All right.
So it's not needed?
We'll pass this one up. Consider Motion to Approve Interlocal Government Agreement Uh, By And Between the Town of St. John, Indiana and the Lake County, Indiana For Lake County Bridge Number Twenty, or, uh...
Two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-eight. Uh, Joliet Street Over St. John Ditch in the Town of St. John.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Uh, next, Consider Acceptance Of Permanent Utility Easement With, uh, Palmyra St. John LLC.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider Acceptance Of Permanent Utility Easement With Palmyra LLC.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Uh, information to be accepted and placed on file with the clerk treasurer. Uh, this is a notice, item, construction permit request for municipal water utility and also meeting notice residential housing program. All right, thank you. Anything else?
Again, same question as last time. Why is this on there? We weren't going to have that on there anymore. And what, and while, while we're talking about it, what's the, what's, somebody asked me, they may, I, I've got a phone call today. What's the residential housing program? What is that?
It's part of the, um, TIF consideration for the, um, St. John Redevelopment Commission Notice um, that is given for, to the president of the town council for the, um, residential TIF for the St. John Commons.
All right, thank you. Uh, staff reports, uh, Beth?
Um, the only thing that I'll mention again is the same comment essentially that I had from the study session going back to your JICA with county on the bridge. I am not comfortable remitting payment by December twentieth for a couple of different reasons. One, the agreement is not executed in full by county at this point. And two, as I was reading through the agreement, it says that these numbers are based on estimates. And so I don't think that we should be remitting a dollar amount based on an estimate. I think it's probably more proper to make a payment based on the actual bid amount, not on an estimated amount. So I would feel more comfortable remitting payment when bid numbers come through and we know exactly what the cost of the project is going to be.
Do you know when they're going to have the bid open up on that, Joe?
That I do not.
So that seems to make very good sense. Is there some reason why we wouldn't do something like that?
Um, the way I understand it, since the county's taken lead on the project, they wanted to assure, be assured that, um, in order for them to move forward on this project, since there's a significant amount of costs that they're bearing on this as well, that they wanted to make sure that St. John was financially committed on this project and that the funds were received and that way, if the project costs were, um, you know, greater than that, obviously, then that would be additional consideration that would be needed. But they wanted to hold the pro, the funds in escrow for that, essentially, is what they're looking at doing.
We've never done that before. I just want to put that on record.
That's what the county wanted.
Anything else?
No, just wanted to make sure we're all clear on, on that check, so as long as you guys understand, we're good to go.
All right. Next, Robinson Engineering.
Thank you, Council. Dave Schilling, Robinson Engineering. Uh, in regards to the Lake Hills Dam, uh, now that that's approved, that is scheduled for next week, the inspection. Um, I just emailed the inspector, told him to proceed. It's very good. Uh, Community Crossings Project, everything's paved and striped. Just have to do a final walkthrough and address any punch list items. Acorn Drive Project, that's all paved as well. We do have to wait a couple of weeks on the sewer before we can, uh, permanently remove the lift station. And lastly, the pavement asset management plan that's required for next year's community crossings was uploaded to NDOT today. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Does that mean I'm not going to get any more emails from them?
I'm going to be reading some... They'll find something else to email you about, I'm sure.
It's like daily.
Uh, Joe?
Um, I want to thank, or take this opportunity to thank, uh, the town council, the waterworks board, sanitary board, uh, for getting the one point four million dollar Acorn, uh, Drive Project completed.
Absolutely.
Uh, special thanks to Robinson Engineering on moving this project along. Um, honestly, that was very well done. Um, we had this project permitted, let for bidding and construction, completed all within this past spring um, and summer and fall construction season, so, um, was a, a very good job. The contract, uh, the contractors, you know, finishing up, I know, a lot of the landscape stuff and kind of getting the project, uh, ready to close out, so looking forward to getting that finalized here. Um, the two thousand twenty-three C, CCMG project, um, also is coming to a conclusion. Milestone is completed, the repaving of this project. Um, they should be finalizing their invoices for payment in December. Um, this will require the project to be closed out in January of 2024. Um, on November twenty-ninth, the Economic Development Commission will be holding a meeting at six PM. This will be followed by a special meeting at seven PM with the Redevelopment Commission, followed by a special meeting at the, with the town council to consider matters related to St. John, uh, Commons TIF and bond ordinance. Um, finally, just, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, all the staff and residents of St. John, and to the town council, clerk treasurer, and to the attorney.
Thanks, Joe.
Standing back to you, bud.
Town council, uh, Wayne?
Thank you.
None.
Jerry?
Yeah, I have nothing to report on the committees, but just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope they have a blessed holiday.
Right?
I'll echo Jerry's sentiments to the town and, uh, fellow members here on the board. I hope you all have a very happy Thanksgiving with you and your family.
Michael?
I'd like to, uh, I'd like, just like to say a few words about, um, the, some of the comments today about Earl Drive. I think the most, want to state the obvious, the most obvious, or ask the best question we can ask ourselves. Why is Earl Drive in the bad shape it is if we have such a wonderful agreement? Answer, we don't. There is no agreement to improve and have that road to proper standards. It's a poor road because there is no agreement to improve that road and have it. Why are we going to pay? Why are we interested in paying two hundred fifty thousand or so for that property? Because we got it at appraisals and we are going to pay fair market value for a property. This is not Russia. We cannot force private owners of property to have a, a public thoroughfare on their property. That's ridiculous, right? Does anybody here want to volunteer their driveway for a public roadway and improve, improve your driveway while everybody dries them down? Um, so we've heard some creative fiction, so, but that's all we've heard. The agreement that we were handed at the study session is not an agreement with the town. That's creative fiction. It's not an agreement with the town. That's what I have to say. Bad planning, bad past planet planning led to Earl Drive being a bad road. It, you know, it, this is America. You, uh, towns cannot confiscate, enforce private property, private owners to do things.
Nobody's confiscating it.
Or, or force them.
There's a, there's an ingress, egress agreement for it. All we wanted to do was just pave it. Twenty-five thousand dollars, it's over with.
If we had the BS button, I'd hit it.
Wow, you're real cool, Mike. I like that.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, create, creative fix by Wayne Pines.
Yeah, okay.
Anyways, that said, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I do wish everybody have a happy Thanksgiving with your family and your friends, uh, and enjoy that time together. Thank you.
Um, I wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, all the employees of the town, all my fellow colleagues up here. And then, uh, one last thing, uh, Evan had something to say. I, I overpassed him. He's going to give you an update on the Ninety-third Project.
He's going to tell you, it's, it'll be done, it'll be done before Christmas.
Um, so I'm going to start with my bad news, let you guys chew on it, and then while I'm going, you can figure your questions and then come at me with some questions. We do have two delays. It's material supply issues. The signal pole was supposed to be delivered to us on November fifteenth. It is now not going to be here until December fourth. Uh, it's a couple of days, four days to be exact, before our completion date. Um, we can have some offline discussions on that, but typically NDOT would look at things a little differently with completion dates and liquidated damages, so there is a discussion to be had there with them only having so many days before actually complete the work. And then the second delay is by the time the change order for the decorative lighties was approved and then I got my hands on it and approved it, the decorative light poles themselves are not going to be delivered before our completion date. So we'll still get the foundations in, all the underground conduit in, and, uh, as soon as the poles are delivered, Hawk will go and install those. Uh, so those are, that's my bad set of news. Um, current schedule has us paving tomorrow and on Monday. Um, we will be final grading the sidewalk on Kyleman as well as the sidewalk west of Kyleman next week. Um, and then there's striping to be done. Uh, likely this time of year, we're not going to be able to get the temperatures we need for thermoplastic, so we're developing some contingencies on potentially temporarily painting the road and then maybe next spring, go ahead and groove it off, which is part of the contract, and then, um, put the actual thermoplastic down at temperatures that they'll handle that. Um, so we'll get, by December eighth, we, the contractor is still promising asphalt, concrete, and restoration, including the sod work, um, by December eighth. So that's currently where we're at. It's, we thankfully had a very nice November out here. Um, today was what I expected for most of the month to be, but, um, they got very sunny, uh, days till this point, so it's going to be a day by day until the eighth. Um, so we're, I'm staying optimistic. I've been telling Wayne every day when we talk. I thought I was going to be pessimistic, Evan, all month on my... I thought I was gonna be pessimistic, Evan, all month, I'm optimistic that we can still reach most of our goal by that December eighth date. If anybody has any questions on that, um, comments, if you can take me back to Passion.
Thank you for your work that you do out there.
No problem. Uh, it, uh, Joe has been on me about temperatures for the asphalt, so we do have what is known as QCQA pavement in the NDOT spec book, it is density controlled and not so much temperature related. So while it may seem too cold for asphalt normally, the contractor has extra specifications and their plants know that they need to lay this down, that they have their own, they have density testers out there while the pavement's going down, so we'll ensure a good product, and then there's always the warranty period to make sure that it goes in well.
Reith Riley's closing?
And Reith Riley's closing the plant, uh, we hear the first of December, so that'd be like, that's Friday, so we have to get all this pavement in this, tomorrow and on Monday, all the pavement will be on the ground. So we'll be working on surface, we will ensure that the contractor's not scraping up the surface, reminding them no three sixties, all rubber tracks, um, uh, brooms instead of shovels when material hits the pavement, um, to make sure the, the pavement stays good. All righty.
It's been a long year, huh, Evan?
It has been, we've made it here, it's, uh, it, as Mike pointed out, the, when we had Passion here, they've always said it was gonna take all year in their scheduling, so, uh, we're here now and they're, they're making promises to be done by the eighth with most of the work that, as I said, so it's, uh, we're, we're getting there. All righty.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday, bud.
You guys all too.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.